Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the zoning board of appeals meeting for the village of Tucker Hole for January 13th, 2021. Nancy, if you would please, take the attendance.
Sure. A member Garrity?
I'm here.
Absent.
Okay. Member Scalzo?
Absent.
Uh, member Palladino?
Present.
Member Jackman?
Present.
Member Fiori?
Present.
Uh, is member Martino here?
Hmm, I don't see him, though.
No.
Okay. And then Chairman, um, Ringwald?
Present.
Thank you. First order of business of business will be the approval of the minutes from the December the ninth meeting 2020. Anybody have any questions? additions, subtractions?
No.
I'm good.
Now I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the December the ninth 2020. Do I have a second?
Second.
Nancy, please poll the board.
Member Palladino?
Right, yeah. Septi.
Member Jackman?
Approved.
Member Fiori?
Approved.
And Chairman Ringwald?
Approved. So we have a number of sixty-nine Main Street is adjourned, twenty-two Underhill Street is adjourned, and fifteen Hollywood Avenue is adjourned as well, leaving us with seventy-seven-two Marveldale and one-seventy-four Marveldale and seven Gifford Street. So we will start in the order that they're listed. Let's go with seventy-seven-two Marveldale. The applicant present, please state your name for the record.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Stephen Accinelli from Vennerusso, Curdo, Schwartz and Curdo on behalf of the applicant.
Thank you. Have there been any changes since our last meeting?
There have not, Mr. Chairman. Most recent set of plans were submitted to the zoning board. No change.
Yes, we have those. Thank you. I am satisfied. I have no questions. Does any member of the board have any questions?
No, I got none.
John?
No question. No questions for me, Tom.
Okay, thank you. See, public hearing is still open on this, so I'm going to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second? Hey, Tommy, maybe you want to just sign and find out if there's anyone who wants to speak from the public on before we close it?
That's a very good point. Thank you. I just did miss that. Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment regarding seventy-seven-two Marveldale subdivision? Please speak now.
Sorry, it was still open? I thought we had.
No, it was open.
Oh, okay. I didn't.
It was a few, it was at least two or three meetings, two meetings ago, so I had to look it up myself. All right, seeing no comments from the public, I'm going to make that motion again to close the public hearing. Do I have a second?
Second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Does any member have a motion in a form of a resolution that they, a resolution in a form of a motion that they would like to present regarding seventy-seven-two Marveldale?
Anyone else print it out, or just you, Tom?
Does anybody have it?
I've got it up electronically. Do you have it printed?
I have it printed. You want me to read it? I'll read it.
Yeah, you know, I, I'm happy to take over if you need a break.
I'll take the, I'll, I'll make the motion. So this application for area variance requested by Compass One LLC for the property located at seventy-seven-two Marveldale Road, Tucker Hole, Section thirty-five, Block two, Lot one, for relief from the following section of the zoning code four-eight dot five, front yard, side yard, and rear yard. Applicant Compass One LLC is the owner of seventy-seven-two Marveldale Road, which consists of an existing business, cause and place, and a vacant, dilapidated building. Applicant is seeking a subdivision of the property where the existing business will continue its operation at it, at its current location while expanding to part of the vacant, expanding to part of the vacant building. The remainder of the vacant building will be demolished and be set aside for future development. Since the applicant needs to subdivide its property, this approval will be conditioned on the planning board approving the subdivision, which they cannot do until the board approves, this board approves the proposed variances. It should be noted that if the planning board approves the subdivision, the existing building will trigger the necessity for the requested variances. The applicant is not seeking at this time to add the buildings that currently exist. Approval of the proposed action is classified as an unlisted action under Part six seventeen of the State Environmental Quality Review Act, SECPA. The applicant will require three variances if the planning board approves the subdivision. The variance that will be required are the front yard, side yard, and rear yard. The required front yard is in the district, in this district is ten feet, and the applicant is proposing one foot six and a half inches. Required side yard is ten feet. The applicant is proposing three feet. The required rear yard is twenty feet, and the applicant is proposing, excuse me, one feet five inches. So although, although these variants look substantial, they represent that the conditions of the existing non-conforming building. The granting of the variance will allow for the underutilized property, property to be adaptively reused. It is demonstrated by this board that the area variance be granted as the benefit to the applicants outweighs the detriment to health, safety, and the welfare of the neighborhood. We've applied the five-prong test as follows. One, there will be, there will not be an undesirable change in character of the neighborhood, and there will not be a detriment to nearby properties. By granting this application, detriments to the surrounding properties will not be produced. The yard variances are triggered by the existing non-conforming building. The application proposes to demolish a portion of the non-conforming building, thereby reducing the nonconformity. The benefit should be, number two, the benefit should be, the benefit, benefit sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than an area variance. Again, since the building is already existing and the variances are only triggered by the proposed subdivision, the relief cannot be achieved by some other method. Number three, the requested variances are not substantial. Although on its face, on its face, the variances appear to be substantial, and the applicant proposes to utilize the existing non-conforming building. The variances are only triggered by the proposed subdivision. It would be debatable that this board would grant said variances if this building was not in existence and was being proposed to be built from scratch. However, it is important to note that the applicant proposes to demolish a portion of the existing building, thereby reducing the nonconformity. Number four, the proposed variance will not have an adverse impact on the physical or environmental condition of the neighborhood. It is anticipated that there will be a substantial improvement to the neighborhood. Applicant is seeking to remove a substantial portion of a dilapidated building and make improvements to the remaining portion of the building that the existing business will move into. The demolished portion of the site will open up for redevelopment, which would be an improvement to the neighborhood. The existing building has a driveway located directly at the Jackson Avenue intersection. Demolishing the building will help improve the landscape, improve the streetscape, excuse me, and pedestrian conditions in particular at the Jackson Avenue intersection. The alleged difficulty, number five, the alleged difficulty was self-created. Although the alleged difficulty was self-created, it is not fatal to the application. There are existing structures, and the variances are only triggered by the subdivision. Therefore, the requested variances are approved, conditioned up the planning board, granting the applicant the requested subdivision. Do I have a second to the motion?
Second.
Nancy, please poll the board.
Member Palladino?
Aye.
Member Jackman?
Approved. Sorry, you cut out there, Nancy, on the last one.
Member Fiori?
In favor.
Sorry. And Chairman Ringwald?
In favor.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
Thank you for improving that area of Marveldale. That is one heck of a mess that you'll be cleaning up. Thank you very much.
I look you forward to getting started as soon as possible. Thank you.
Just keep the quiet. I live close by.
Will do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night, everyone.
Yeah, have a good night.
Thank you very much.
Bye-bye.
Aye.
Uh, where's my agenda? Here we go. So, good. Next up, we have one-seventy-four Marveldale Road, construction of the new three-story commercial building. Is the applicant present? If so, please state your name for the record.
I, Leonard Brandis, Brandis Architects. I'm here representing John Semenera and Three D New Rochelle LLC.
Thank you. Have there been any changes to the plans since our last meeting?
There have been some changes where the building was moved back, adding some more green space. I'd like to share the screen so I could put that on the, with us. Give me a second. Gotta get the other drawing on. Uh, Leonard, this, right here, January, this. Okay, let me just share. Okay, so I just wanted to share with the major changes that we did set this back, this area back further, putting this, uh, three-story structure further back, adding green space over here, adding a bicycle racks for use for people to come by and use it. We also brought down the building so that this is not just an open space. We originally just had a column over in the corner here, and now we have a full wall coming down to make the building a little more solidified upon the street as requested by the planning board. I think their request is reasonable, and I think it's really comes out making a very nice-looking building here.
Well, I think some of your changes are a big improvement from the original plan.
Thank you.
Any members have any questions?
As I got, I got one. I put this up earlier. Because if the fire department can access the back, in case they have to go to the roof with a ladder, would it be easier to go, go through the back from the alleyway here?
Uh, well, we do have the five-foot alleyway where we will be having some stairs going up to the area back there, and we will also, as discussed in the last meeting, we will create a doorway from the second or third floor, whichever is easiest to get to the back of the property. So we will have exterior access as well as from the interior. So the building can be maintained, and people can be rescued.
Yeah.
All they're required to do was access one side of the building, and that would be the front.
Oh.
Thank you, Bill.
So at a previous meeting, you stated that you would need to remove some of the earth in the back of the building. Do you have an order of magnitude? I mean, how many feet of dirt are you taking out?
Uh, I didn't do the calculations on the dirt, but I can have that for you.
No, it doesn't have to be exact. I mean, so in your drawing here, go over to the right side where your, your cursor is now. Nope, you had it.
Sorry. Back to, back to this drawing, over here.
Yeah. So where you're pointing now, does the dirt come all the way up to the second floor then?
It comes just about to the second floor right now, yes. It'll be coming up to that area.
All right, that answers my question.
All right. So that's why we would have the door, and it might be a little higher, but we're going to be using the building as part of the retaining wall to support this.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
The first, so the first floor is a retaining wall, the back of the building.
Yes, and it's all, it's all garage in that area. It's all for parking. And that's why we need the offices up here.
All right, just to remind everyone in the public as well, what you're seeking are basically two variances. One for the side, both side yards, setbacks, sorry, the right and the left, and the other is for the far. You have reduced the far by moving the building back, so that's a good thing. So basically, we're really faced with, you know, a variance on the right side, side yard, and a variance on the left side, and that's pretty much it. The height's fine. I mean.
The height's a point.
Lenny, can I ask a question? Can you just refresh us how tall, how high the building is?
The top of the roof is at forty feet.
Forty feet, exactly.
Yes. The rooftop, the rooftop itself, the, there is a smaller section over here where it goes up a couple of feet. I can bring the elevations up. I, the actual drawings might be a little easier.
This, Lenny, I just wanted to remind you, I think there's a provision in the zoning for buildings over forty feet. The setback needs to be an additional ten feet?
Correct, but the building is at forty feet, and I reviewed that with Mr. Williams.
Okay. Just want to make sure we're clear.
That is correct. We reviewed it several times, and the elevation of the roof is forty feet and no higher.
Got it.
Got it.
Okay.
Good evening, guys. I, to answer your question, it is about thirty-five hundred yards of material estimated will come out to excavation.
Thank you. You're welcome. Okay, and as you can see on the drawing here, that we are at the top over here. The top of the roof is at forty feet over here. Uh, we do have a parapet over this front area and a parapet over the, uh, the other section. The parapet wall is not part of the code issue. That was a good question. No, thank you.
You're saying that inside the roof is forty feet, but with the parapet, you're going to forty-six foot four?
Correct.
All right, so that's what Noah was saying, that if it was that high, you would need twenty feet if it was.
That's incorrect.
No, above forty feet.
Right, but the roof is not above forty feet. It's at forty feet.
Right, because you're saying the parapet is not part of the roof. That's your point, right, Bill?
The parapet is not part of the roof, and under our definitions for roof, it is clear it goes to the flat part of the roof, not the parapet.
Okay. So, so just, actually, that's an interesting point. So if they wanted to put a steeple or some big peak on the top, that they wouldn't be considered, you know, a decorative.
No, it would. Under the, under the definition, Tom, if it's a peaked roof, then it would go to the mean part of the roof, but because the roof is flat, it goes to the flat part of the roof.
What if, what if they wanted to put some kind of a decorative front up there? I'm just curious.
There are, there are limits in our zoning code. They would permit them to do some decorative, uh, thing on the roof, but it's limited in size according to the zoning.
Okay, thank you. I don't have any further questions. I just, to let the public know, during the work session, we talked at length about the side yard setbacks and trying to figure a way if they could move the building in a little more and allow a little more space. Any members have any questions?
No. No, I'm good.
Any additional points?
Um, to your point about our work session, I mean, I personally have my misgivings about the tightness of the property line, given, you know, who knows what's coming down the road in the future, and especially given that the applicant's, uh, very beautiful view from the right side of the building, if you're sitting in the street with all those nice windows, will be kind of negated if someone, for example, builds an identical structure. Nine, ten feet between buildings is very tight. However, as the applicant stated during our work session, um, you know, he is, he is at three stories of his own volition. He has the right in this area to go up even further. Um, this is also a commercial district. This is not a residential district. So the same deference that we provide to neighbors in the residential districts is, you know, probably not as applicable in our minds here, uh, given the function that this area serves in the village. Would that be accurate, Tom?
That's an excellent point. Yes, that's accurate. I agree. So basically, you know, if, my takeaway from that explanation would be if, if we were to force him to stick to the code and not require a variance for the side yards, he can go up as much as two more stories.
Well, the applicant, you know, and we can leave it to, we can leave it to him to say, but the applicant points out, which I think fairly, that he can't come in any further on the left side, or he's unable to use, um, the area as intended. The right side, you know, there's a little more wiggle room there, but at the same time, he's also voluntarily come back from the street line based on the input, input from the planning board. And as a result, it cuts down on his ability to, you know, decrease the footprint from side to side, given that he's already brought it back, went back as well.
Right.
So I, I mean, I personally do not love the, the idea that it's squeezed onto the property there, and however, again, it's a commercial district. This is not a residential house. It's not going to be towering over anyone else's house. Um, I mean, my primary concern would actually be for the applicant and for his very nice bank of windows that's going to be on that side of the building. However, that's, you know, that's his call. It's, I'm sure it's going to be a high-quality building, given the prior work he's done, and I'm sure the planning board will have further input. I think, well, one thing we did mention, John, was that I, I am a little concerned that on the current plans, there's just, you know, because that was in the work session. On the current plans, there seems to be no manner of accessing the rear of the structure for maintenance, aside from the stairs on the right of the property, which are not on the plans. Um, I would just, you know, and it's up to you, but I would suggest possibly adding an egress, uh, maybe even a fire egress to the, to the rear of the building on the second, second story.
Yes, we will, we will be adding that. We will. And also, you know, I'd like to say that, you know, keeping at three stories, it, it goes with the rest of the block. Everything is that three stories. And also, the impact, if we went four stories, say, then you have the people in the back. Now you're starting to come into their view. You know, right now, the, the roof line of, of this building is the bottom of their homes. So really, if they're sitting outside on the porch, we're lower than their, than their porch, which is nice. If we went up higher, you know, I don't know. If I lived there, I wouldn't want to see that.
Uh, for the sake of reference, what are the current buildings flanking the property? Do you have a, give a view of what's currently flanking the property, uh, Leonard?
Uh, we have photographs. Uh, I can take those up.
Because I believe neither property is, you know, over, I think, a story, so we're not talking about competing sightlines here.
Yeah. No, I, I was only talking about the, the residence.
No, yeah, I know. I'm sorry. I went off on my own path here.
Okay, I don't.
Got the photos up now.
So there's just on, on the left.
Building right now. That's the existing restaurant right now that we are taking down. Here's the restaurant, and here is, right now, it's a parking lot, and another, it's a poster, car poster.
Yeah, convertible tops.
So does convertible top own that parking lot all the way up to the property line?
Uh, he's right up at the property line with his parking right now.
Okay.
I can see it right here.
So that side's not a concern for me. How far from, how far is the other building from the property line? Do you know it happened offhand? I know that's the structure we're talking about here. Uh, the next one.
Right here.
There we go, that one.
It's also basically on the property line.
I think there might be a couple of feet, Lenny.
It's like two feet, I think. Uh, got a picture. I don't know if I have a good picture of that one. But I will check that. I believe there is maybe a foot or two, but that's, it's very tight to the property lines. As you go down the block, you'll have buildings that are on the property lines as well.
So, and, and I mean, Leonard, I'll leave that to the planning board, which are, you know, imminently more qualified on it and on this than I am, but, uh, that would lead me to believe that the, uh, rather idyllic Bavarian hillside that you portrayed, the, uh, view from under the garage there, might be a little darker and closed in than, than that, given that that building is so close. You're talking about a seven-foot, um, space between your structure and the structure to the right. Um, I'm assuming there's going to be plenty of light. I just don't want a dark.
We will have lots of light in there. No, we obviously, we light that up. And keep in mind, it's also, it's a fourteen-foot-high ceiling in there. So this is a big space that's in there. It's not a standard garage, uh, because we are.
I understand, Leonard, but again, essentially, we're looking at, it's going to be matching the height of that building next door. So you've got to set, there's not going to be any light coming in from that side, is my point.
Yeah.
Well, there will, because that side faces west, so the sun will rise and come across, and they'll, they should have daylight in that alley, you know, pretty much all day.
Well, seven feet is, yeah, okay. Anyway, my point, again, Leonard, it has nothing to do with his approval. It's just, I would like to avoid that dark dank.
It's, if I may say, I mean, it's the lesser of two evils. I mean, like we discussed before, we didn't want to go up more. We, we needed a certain square footage to make it viable, so we tried to keep the, the, the height down as much, so.
Yeah, no, John, I'm not hassling you on that. I just want to make sure that Leonard's not just leaving it unlit, which I assume is not the case. I, you know, I want to make sure it looks nice, you know, seen from the street, uh, which, again, it's more the planning board than us, but that's just my side comment. It has nothing to do with your approvals.
I understand.
It'll look a heck of a lot better than what we have now.
Yeah, definitely.
Hey, Nathan, just, just to add, the planning board is looking at lighting, and they have the same concerns you did with, you know, making sure that that's not dark inside that area there, that it's going to be well lit, so they are looking. I don't know. I'm sure you've driven by it, John. There's that place on, uh, what is it, over by the Ford dealership in Scarsdale. It's like a bank or something. It has that same, like, shelf parking area structure.
Yeah.
And I just was driving the other day, and it's just, it's so dark. Um, so I'm just trying to avoid that, which, again, I'm sure you will. You do good work.
That bank is less than eight feet high when you walk, when you go into that space. That's the big difference. It is a very low, uh, parking area.
Okay.
Fourteen feet is a huge difference.
I mean, we're going to address it. We're going to put plenty of lighting in there, and, you know, and it is the parking garage, too. I mean, it's not like it's, you know, livable space down there or something. I mean, it's parking. I mean, it's, you know, we'll, we'll provide plenty of light. You know, once you get to the windows upstairs, those windows are above the roof line that's next door. So, I mean, there they'll have plenty of light.
Yeah, John, for me, it was, John, for me, it was more just about, I'm, I'm, like, again, I'd have to send you a picture of it, but it's, like, when you walk by the building, that building I'm talking about, Leonard points out, it's only like eight feet, but it just looks kind of dark and creepy underneath. So I'm just trying to avoid that look for you. That's all.
No, no, I, I understand. Believe me, and I don't want it to be dark and creepy, because then, you know, if maybe somebody doesn't want to go in there, but I think we could overcome that with lighting. I mean.
That's, that's what I assumed. I just wanted to bring up the point. I don't, I don't need to blabber it any further.
All right.
Any other questions from?
That's it for me. I got nothing else. And Tom, I just might want to note, we're keeping this open since we got new plans.
Okay. I, I just want to echo what member Jackman said, that, John, any one of your, your jobs of, just, the, the buildings are outstanding. This, they're really, they're very nice, very nicely done. So I would have no doubt this would be done in the same quality of your other buildings, so I'm confident it'll look great.
Thank you. We take a lot of pride.
Anybody else from the board?
I just got one, this one, just one little concern.
Sure.
So even though that's an industrial area, just make sure that, no problem with the soil. That's, that's there.
Well, I've done a few projects on that side of the street, and we've done testing at every project, and we have not really found any problems there. The other side of the street, yes, we have had problems. No question about it. They dug out for all their quarries and really made a mess.
All right, so I'll make sure I don't notice nothing happening later down, down the road, no.
You're kind of worrying me with the way you answered that, Lenny. Not really found?
No, nothing's really, nothing has been found on the other side.
Okay.
I have, I did Lucenti's both projects over there, and also Elite's, uh, project over there as well. I did an extension for Fleetwood when I did the back over there. So all those got tested, and there was never anything found on any of those property, properties over there.
Okay.
Good question. Thanks.
Hey, Gary, just for a, just for one second, uh, just to clarify again, that, you know, the streetscape and things like that, that's for the planning board to worry about. We don't worry about that stuff, right?
That's correct.
Sidewalks, et cetera. Okay.
Yeah, you worry about the, you know, you're, you're, you're building the footprint of the building.
We're still with the variances.
Going to take it from there.
I assumed. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Remind everyone that the public hearing is open on this. Thank you. Is there anyone from the public who wants to comment regarding one-seventy-four Marveldale Road? Okay, seeing none.
Just one comment, not really a question. If Lenny could please share again the floor plan with us? Where's Lenny? Oh, there he is.
I gotta, give me a second.
Sure.
Everybody see that?
Yep.
Okay.
So the front of the building from the curb line, what is that dimension that we're seeing exactly?
That is ten feet as required by code.
As required by the code. So we have ten feet there and you're proposing, uh, another extra seven feet, right?
Seventeen feet over here.
Correct. So that's what we have in our front setback.
Correct.
Two different setbacks, ten feet and seventeen, correct. And one side is a five feet and the other side is five feet as well.
Correct.
Perfect. Just confirming there. All right. Thank you.
My pleasure.
Thank you. So is there anyone from the public who wants to comment regarding this? All right, seeing none, I'll make a motion to leave the public hearing open until next month. For the second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. So you understand where we're coming from. We understand where you're coming from. We should be able to wrap this up at our next meeting. Barring any major changes or. Couple of the members that aren't here, if they had major concerns, which I don't believe they do, but that's why it's still open. All right.
I will be adding the access to the back, uh, on the second floor.
Very good.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, John. Appreciate it.
Good night. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good night.
Okay, last but not least, sorry you guys had to sit through all this, uh, is seven Gifford Street. Is the applicant present? And if they are, please state your name for the record. You have to unmute yourself.
Steven Christine Sanzello.
Antonio Leo, I am the architect for the project. I have my clients, Steven, Christine Sanzello over here as well. Uh, I'd like to share my screen so I can show you the, uh. Project.
For note, I will be, uh, recusing myself from this decision, uh, based on it being my neighbor. Thank you.
Fair enough. Okay, uh. Can everybody see the screen? Okay. So currently, this is. Property. It's a fifty by hundred piece of property and existing home is here. Uh, there's a one story addition here. And the, uh, existing, um, garage is located in this area over here. And then we have a place that, that's in this location. With a tree as a circle over here. We are proposing to demolish the existing, um, uh, garage. And, uh, section of the, uh, of the, uh, driveway. As you can see, we have quite a bit of a long driveway here. It's approximately. Eighty feet, uh, from front to back. So it gives us plenty of, uh, ample parking space. So what we'd like to do is place the garage, uh, twenty feet from the rear setback. Just, just move it forward. And the reason for that is because we have very, it's a very small lot, very small, small rear yard. And, uh, uh, with the inclusion of the place that it just provides very little, uh, opportunity for the, uh, my clients to. Have a, a private, uh, area where they can, uh, celebrate the occasion, have barbecue, things of that nature. Currently, all, all of that is being done in the driveway area here. And it's not the most private area because you could actually. It's seen from the street and the, and the adjacent neighbor. So by moving the, um, uh, the garage forward, it allows us to have a, a rear kind of patio where we can have a seating area, barbecue area. And it becomes very private, uh, private because our neighbor's garage is actually blocking most of this area here. The garage will be, the new garage is actually, uh, smaller than the existing garage. The existing garage is approximately three hundred and twenty square feet. The new proposed garage is two hundred and sixty square feet. It's actually smaller. It is a little bit taller. Uh, it's fourteen feet high. What I'd like to do is also share some photographs of the existing, um. This is property. Give me a second. Okay, so these are, uh, photographs of the existing property. This is the house. This is the neighbor's house. Um, as you can see, it's a shared driveway. As you can see, currently they have a, a picnic table here, a basketball court here. And again, all, all activities really occur in this area over here. Get closer, you can see the, the space better. And this is the existing. Here, it's got a little wood fence. Back, this is the side, uh, the side of the house addition. This is the garage itself here, which will be taken down. The place that, the tree here. So that's the property.
So let me ask a question. Behind this gray garage is a white garage. Is that, I'm assuming that's the garage on the, the property that abuts this property?
That's correct.
So the, the garage you're putting up will be taller than either the yellow garage or the white garage?
No, the garage will be approximately the same height as the yellow garage. Actually, there's, there's a slight gray change between the yellow garage and our garage. And it, it won't be as tall as the white garage behind, uh, behind this.
So, so the owner isn't concerned that they're creating a pretty much a cavernous, you know, spot back there? They're going to be surround three walls of garage?
Uh, no, this is what they'd like. And actually, I, if I could share a, a model. Bring it up. So this is the proposed, uh, such, uh, project. The new garage would be placed here. This is the client, the adjacent neighbors, uh, existing garage. And their, their house is over here. So the garage actually provides privacy by moving the garage forward. Privacy, uh, from, uh, the adjacent neighbor from looking into the, uh, uh, my client's, uh, rear door. So as you can see, walking around this. So the idea of the.
Yeah, but Antonio, I'm sorry, but that, this picture doesn't do it justice because the other garage is not. In this drawing. What, my point is, is that you have a U-shaped cavernous spot there. I mean, will any sunlight even get in? There we go. That's pretty quick.
Hey.
I'm impressed.
Technology.
I tell you, Antonio, you're all right in my book, buddy.
There you go.
So you'll get, you know, it's, it's, it's after at the northeast corner. So you get, you know, you're going to get some southeast corner of the property. So you're going to get some sunlight there. And again, keep in mind, it's only fourteen feet. So, you know, in the middle of summer, the, the, uh, the sun is really high up in the sky. So it's not going to be an issue. In winter, it might be a little dark, but in the summer it's not.
Do we have Texas hold them there?
Uh, actually, the, uh, Steve is a very good player. Uh, we, we could do our fantasy draft there as well. I mean. You know, so I think by, by moving the, uh, the, uh, garage forward, it just allows them to utilize their rear much better than they currently done right now.
And I just want to note for the group that our neighbor next door is, is supportive and has, has drafted a letter. And I'm sorry, I didn't get to you guys in advance of this meeting. But she is in full support of this placement, being obviously the person most impacted by this new placement.
Then I, I, the only thing I'm going to ask is if this thing goes, get approved, it's Mike from the building department, is maybe we can get a, uh, because you're going to need a letter. Or something, we're going to want it for the file, just to say that the neighbors are right, were you even working on their property? Because I can't see you doing it other, any other way. Like, you know, while you're doing your construction.
Yeah, Mike, Mike, tomorrow morning, I'll, I'll send the letter that the neighbors in compliance is in agreement with this project. And if you need anything else, we'll get it for you.
Yeah, no, just to say that they know that they're going to be working on their property because I can't see this getting built any other way.
Yeah, of course.
Also, Antonio, you said that the tree will be coming down?
The tree in the center of the.
Yes.
And then eventually.
Do they plan on planting another tree in replacement of that tree?
Uh, we didn't discuss that, but is that a requirement?
Well, we normally ask applicants to take nice trees down to replace them with something.
Well, the tree's being taken down because it's dying.
We, we will come up with a plan with our neighbor to make sure that if it can be preserved, it's preserved. And if it doesn't, then we'll replace the, a tree wherever is. We can find a spot.
Yeah, I don't think you're going to be able to preserve it. I mean, you can see that it's got some disease in it. But it would just be nice to start out with something that, you know, twenty years from now will be a nice tree again.
In the middle of the shared driveways?
No, 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 no.
Excellent place, Tom. I think Billy was talking about.
I will give you some feedback, Bill, in our neighborhood. They've been having to take all the big trees down because there's just no room for them. And they're, uh, becoming a. Hazard during, uh, adverse conditions. Even the judge's house, they had to take all his beautiful old trees down.
Yeah, I don't know what that tree is, but like the maple, for example, only lasts eighty years and they have to come down. Or they'll fall down.
Doesn't think of something.
Yeah, no, a little tree, but it'll have to be in the backyard someplace. It can't be in the driveway.
Billy, I just had a question for you. When you looked at it, you cited them for the patio too, right? So zero lot line they're looking for?
Well, uh, so patio is basically, uh, um, it's not a, you, we don't need, I think, a.
No, you can't, can't build on the property line on.
Yeah, you got to stay four feet off the property line with the patio. Otherwise you need a variance.
That's why I'm bringing it up.
Variance is.
That's why I'm asking, make sure you cited the zero on that whole side.
Well, he's, uh, he cited the zero on the side, correct.
Okay.
Any questions?
Billy, what about the back?
It already had a zero with the garage.
Okay, yeah.
It has zero at the garage and it had a, uh, nine inch.
Okay, perfect.
So your rear will be twenty feet, right, instead of zero? But the side stays the same.
Yes.
I, I. I understand what, what you're trying to do. I, I personally. I, I just don't think it's going to look right. And, you know, the argument of you don't have enough yard space. You do. I mean, you, you chose to put a ju- a jungle gym in it.
Well, we have.
That's your, that's your prerogative, of course, but.
Right, because Sanzillos have a, a nine-year-old son and, you know.
Yeah, no, I, I, I get it, but, you know, uh. I've never seen a request like this before, since I've been on the board. And my, my concern is. Setting a precedent. If anybody wants to stop moving their garages up that are already non-conforming.
Um, I don't think this.
I, I have to think, I have to think about it.
If you, if you go on, um, um. I'm marble there, um, Columbus. Right across the street from the, uh, Metro North parking area. There is two homes that have a shared driveway and they have this type of configuration. I think I took a photograph of it and, uh, if I find it, I'll send it to, to the board.
All right, good.
I don't think we're setting precedents. I think there's, uh, uh, garages in the, uh, uh, Toccoho community that have this type of configuration or something similar to this.
Pre-existing or they moved them?
I'm going to say it looks like it was moved. But it's fairly new installation look.
All right. I mean, it's, it's not, it's not by any means horrible. And if, if the neighbor on the right side is, is, doesn't have a problem with it, I mean, that's a big plus.
Yeah.
Again, it was.
You know, it, it provides them a little more privacy. I get it. But they also, they're also now looking at side of two garages.
Yep.
Antonio, is this a slab on grade, I'm assuming, right?
There's going to be any gutters on it?
It is, yes, yeah.
Okay.
We're putting in the.
Now I'm concerned like for the winter time, in case of water comes down, it's going to go right on her part of the driveway, then it might be ice.
Yeah, no, no, we're, we're putting in gutters and we're putting in a drywall, uh, to capture the, uh.
The other thing to remember is that their building cannot cross over the line at any point. So the gutters and everything, it'd have to be even with the wall if it's on a property line.
Say that again, Bill?
The gutters are the overhang on the garage cannot overhang on to the neighbor's property.
Oh, good. Right.
Okay.
Anybody have any questions?
I answer mine, Phil.
All right. I mean, I already expressed mine. I, I just, I, 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 something about, I'm just not comfortable with it, but.
Can we go like, like take a walk up there one day? Just, just like.
Okay, it's a good idea. That might help.
So if you see one of us walking around, you know, don't call the police on us, okay?
Do you have the sign on your lawn requesting, uh, uh, variance? You know, the, the notification.
No.
We tried to get it from the town, but, uh, the lady I was talking to at the building department. She still wasn't able to get the signs from the other people she gave them to. But once she had gotten it, she was going to give us a call and we would pick it up.
All right. So, Bill, can't we buy a few more signs? I keep hearing that same complaint. I mean, how much is a sign? Speak to the mayor.
How about you make a request to the mayor's office? We've got a budget cut.
How about, how about a cardboard sign? I mean, anything, geez. All right, uh.
Okay.
I think that would help. Yeah, I, I don't think it's horrendous by any means. I just, there's something about it just doesn't seem right. Maybe it's the, the rendering or what the drawing. I'm assuming there's at least four feet between the building and the garage there where the trucks bark.
I'm sorry, where, Tom?
Uh, yeah, well, you, you just had your curse with it, with the, the truck is parked.
Yes.
It has to be four feet, four foot, foot walkway or passageway. I don't have the drawing in front of me, sorry. With the fence, you had that fence, is that at least four feet?
Yes.
Okay. And then four feet from the side of the garage to the house?
From the side of the garage to the house? Yes, it's seven foot ten. Garage to the house, two foot ten.
All right.
Antonio, any plans to re-blacktop at the end or they're not doing that?
Yeah, so the goal is to redo the, the entire driveway, but that'll be the last thing that will be eventually done.
Both, both sides, I'm assuming, right, or?
I'm sorry?
Are, are they both, to share a driveway, I'm assuming they're both going to do it?
Yes.
Any, uh, any other questions from any members?
No.
We, we should point out to the applicants that we are currently missing two board members. Um, who, who might have additional questions, but. That'll be it.
That's true. I'm going to make a motion to open the public hearing. For the Gifford Street request to move, move the, uh, garage. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment regarding seven Gifford Street area variance for a garage? Okay, seeing none, I'll make a motion to leave the public hearing open. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that pretty much wraps it up unless you guys have anything else you want to share with us tonight.
Uh, that's it. So we'll send you the letter, um, they, uh. And, uh. And the, uh, of the house in Columbus. Right, I refer to regarding the, the staggered parking.
That would help. And just to remind the homeowner that, uh, if you don't mind, we, we'll, some of us will take a, uh. We're not going to parade around your house. We're just going to look down your driveway pretty much.
We're going to use a swing.
You don't have a large dog or anything. You're going to sick on me, dude.
I do, actually. I'm actually in the canine unit, um, and one of the reasons we need the, uh, the extra room. Uh, is because I do, I, uh, I do obedience training in the back of, uh, in the backyard.
Oh, boy.
Truck that's actually in the three D rendering is, is my work truck. Uh, um, so there, there will be a dog back there periodically. So you might want to just get a hollow before you open the door.
Let me give you a recommendation, guys. Maybe you call first.
Ring the doorbell, bing.
All right. So Antonio, I'll call you before I go because I can't run as fast as I did forty years ago.
Down a block on my three Gifford Street. As you guys know, I work from home, so feel free to knock on my door and I can walk outside with you guys and.
Say whatever you want. My money's on the dog.
Hello, I'm saying, if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to come down and, and, uh, meet with you, uh, if you're, when you're on site.
Yeah, okay. And, and. Yeah, okay. And, and to Member Jackman's point, the couple of members that are missing, they may be interested as well.
That's fine.
All right, very good. Any other questions?
Yeah, we're all good. Thank you.
All right, folks. Good meeting. So I will make a motion to close the meeting for January 13th, 2021.
I, I did have one question, Tom. Noah, Noah, was there something you were supposed to be providing color commentary for today? Or you just enjoy our meetings so much?
I, I do enjoy the meetings. No, I'm here for questions, but nothing came up for
Okay.
74 or 174. It seems like for those projects, most of the issues now rest with the planning board. And it's kind of a judgment call for the zoning board, but.
No, I just wanted to double check. You didn't have a specific thought in mind you wanted to communicate to us this evening?
No, I, I think a lot of the questions were raised by the planning board and I didn't want to muddle. But it seems like most of the issues, again, I think will be addressed to the planning board.
Okay, thank you, Noah.
Aye.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to close the meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, good night, Toccoho. See you next time. Thanks, everybody.
Have a good evening, everyone.
Good night.